Good afternoon, everyone. As soon as we have it, I see everybody on the screen, names up. Anybody else waiting on, or we good to go?
I think everybody council-wise and staff is here, Tom.
Okay, very good. Well, then, go ahead and welcome everyone to the November 23rd, 2021 City Council, Adjourned City Council Meeting. Read the virtual rules. City Council chambers remain closed to the public in accordance with Assembly Bill 361. All members of the City Council and city staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. Following alternatives are available to members of the public who wish to watch the meeting and/or provide comments to the City Council before and during the meeting. Audio/video broadcast of City Council meeting can be accessed in real time from your computer, tablet, or smartphone at the following link. We have those links online at the city website. You can watch the meeting on Cable Comcast Channel 96. You can watch it on the city's YouTube page, and you can join and participate in the Zoom meeting. Turn the page. How to comment during a public meeting. Public comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you would like to submit written comments, please submit written comments by email to cityclerk@lostvanas.org, or drop them off at City Hall at 520 J Street. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant, comment by Zoom Video Conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant to comment by phone, please call on one of the above-listed phone numbers, and they are on the website. You will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing *9 to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press *6 to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Important things to remember during a public comment period. All attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not on the item you wish, is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you are interested in is called and public speakers are invited to raise their hands, raise yours then, and we will call them all in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. If there is any disruption to the meeting, the live feed to YouTube and Channel 96 will be paused for a short period of time. Once the disruption is corrected, the live feed will resume and the meeting will continue where it last off. So now, I will call the meeting to order at 4:04 PM and ask Police Chief Breezy, the latest, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Get my chair. All right. Roll call, Ms. Maloney.
Jones.
President.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Lamis.
Here.
Furia.
Here. We have a quorum. Now we will move to Item 4, Consideration of Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert.
Lambert, Mr. Lambert, I have a motion by Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mayor Yamas here, I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Furia.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. We're going to go to the public forum now. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of public interest that is within jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. The public may submit their comments via handwritten statement by dropping into the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, by mail, or email the city clerk@lostvanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. If you are here to speak on the ARPA workshop, Item 6, we will take those comments after the staff presentation and, as we would in public forum. And so then there would be a five-minute limit on that as in public forum, and we'll take that after the, after the staff presentation for the American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan Workshop. Are there any public, would anyone like to speak in the public forum? I see no hands raised. Ms. Maloney, written comment?
I do have four written emails that I received, but they all have to do with ARPA.
Okay. We will go ahead and take those then at that time, since that's the item they are addressing. So I will close the public forum and go to Item 6. This is our workshop regarding the city's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Spending Plan. And for that, we go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we have the fun American Rescue Plan Act to discuss and go over. So let's just jump right in. So tonight, our workshop, workshop goals are to start with an overview of what ARPA is, share the results of the community survey that we provided for about a month, a little over a month, to the community to provide feedback. I'd like to inform you on what some of the eligible expenses are that we can use the funding to and for, and then also can get councils feedback on what they think of proposed uses and if they have any other uses that they want to discuss. And then finally, we can focus on the funding that is remaining that hasn't been assigned. So tonight, what we're going to go over with the eligible expenses are four different categories of eligible expenses. And then in each one of those categories, there's another range of categories, and each of those categories are quite restrictive on what we may or may not do with the funding. So we'll be discussing that along the way. So first of all, ARPA was established to address the impacts of COVID that they have both on the community and on the city itself. It was signed into law on March 11th, 2021. The American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA as we call it, provides relief to respond to the coronavirus, including aid to local governments in every city, town, and village in America. The city of Los Vanas itself was awarded $9.8 million. We did receive our first payment of about $4.4 million in July of this fiscal, or this year, and we are set to receive our second payment in July of 2022. We do have to periodically report to the Department of Treasury, with the first report being due April 30th, 2022. It was originally due in October of this year, however, the final rule hasn't been released yet by the Department of Finance or the Department of Treasury, and they pushed back the recording requirements for any use. In addition to the reporting, we, the, the ARPA funding covers the costs from March 3rd of 2021, and that the funds have to be obligated to be spent by December 31st of 2024 and performance by December 31st, 2026. Performance essentially means that we have to have the check written and paid for that project by the end of December 31st, 2026. So the American Rescue Plan, some of the things that we need to consider when we're making our decisions, we'd like to avoid funding items that could be funded by other federal, state, or county sources, so we really don't want to duplicate funding. We also want to use, because it's one-time revenues that we're receiving, we want to use it for one-time expenses and try to avoid ongoing programs that will cost additional funding that maybe the city can't absorb after the ARPA funding runs out. We have a long time to spend this money, so we could be cautious, we could be slow about it, really do a lot of research on the programs that, programs and on projects that we want to commit funding to. You'll see tonight that I am requesting some funding and to do it in small implements that way if the program's not successful, we don't have to fully commit all that money. And if it is successful, maybe we want to commit more money. So that's what I mean by remain flexible, and we have a long horizon to spend the money. And then we want to continue to review the revenue loss related to the COVID pandemic. So you'll see as one of the spending priorities that we can reimburse the city for lost revenues. Unfortunately, we don't qualify for the first calendar year, 2020. We will know by the end of December if we qualify for 2021, and so on and so forth. So it's something we can kind of leave funds back for in case we do qualify in the coming years. So when I mentioned that we don't want to duplicate funding, some of the programs that are still in existence for COVID assistance and some that have already been expended are, is what I mean when I say we don't want to duplicate the funding. So current funding that's available are rent and utilities. These are state programs. I'm happy to say that just today, we received a couple of checks of assistance for some of our utility bill payers. The state is, they've applied for the rental, I'm sorry, the utility assistance program, and we received checks, one of them was over $2,000 to help somebody catch up with the utility bill. We did do this in the care spending as well, and so that's one of the things that we may not want to see duplicated. Food resources, there are several different resources out there for people to, to get food, whether it's a shelter or they have a pandemic EBT, EBT card for children. They also have changed the rules a little bit about WIC, and you apply for it, all to kind of fall in line with the program and the needs of the community with the pandemic. Currently, the state also has a California Venues Grant available. This is for different small businesses in the area that can apply for this. Employees Retention Credit is also for businesses within California, and that's open to apply through December 31st. Another small business program is Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which is available through December 31st, 2021. And also, there's currently Project Room Key, which is to help shelter homeless that might be affected by COVID, whether they were, whether they are sick, felt that they have been exposed or need to get out of the COVID situation. These are the program, vouchers that can get them hotel rooms. And then prior funding includes all the stimulus payments that we're well aware of, a paycheck protection program for small businesses that was offered through the state, a California Small Business Grant Program, Restaurant Revitalization Fund, Small Business Association Debt Relief, Mortgage forbearance, Shutter Venue Operations Grant. And then again, the city had a small business program and also offered facility, city utility assistance program with care. So these are either funding that has already been established or is, is still available to people in different aspects of needing revenue. So let's just jump into the public opinion of the, the survey results. Unfortunately, we only had 77 people respond to our survey. We did float it for a longer amount of time, so we can try to re-establish the link out there and let people know that it was still out there. And even with, before we did that, we only had 39 responses. After we did that, we got the rest of the responses. There were 75 residents of Los Vanas that responded, and four business owners. The most important thing that they said was premium pay for essential workers at 52%. And the least important thing that, that the community wanted to spend the money on was broadband infrastructure.
Sonia, can I?
Yes.
I have a question. On the survey, I didn't, I didn't get to see it. Is it possible that one person can fill out the survey more than once?
Yes, it is. It doesn't, it doesn't stop anybody from filling it out multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
And there, in the staff report, included with the staff report, there was an ARPA Funding Community Survey result, so it shows all the results for the questions. The chart that's being shown right now, one of the questions that we asked are, what are the three things that are most important to the respondent? And as you can see here, 51 people stated that premium pay for essential workers is what was most important. Coming in second was cover the payroll for eligible city public employees, and this would be anybody who's responding to COVID. And then spend the money on public safety at 29 people responding. So again, each person had three responses on this particular question. And then the least important items were rental assistance, housing programs. Three people skipped, skipped the question, and those all came even. So unfortunately, we didn't get the results that we had hoped for. We thought more people would respond to the community survey. We left it open for an extra two weeks, and we just didn't get the response that we were hoping for. So just jumping into what we can use the funds for, there are four different categories, as I mentioned before. The first category is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative impact. So by, by responding to the public health, that means that we could spend the funding on mitigation efforts of COVID, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and then certain public health and safety staff. And this is where paying payroll for employees that respond to COVID falls into. Part of Category 1 also is to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. This is where we would include harms to workers, households, small businesses, all impacted industries, or public sectors that are impacted by COVID. The second category is to provide premium pay to essential workers. As council members, part of the negotiations, we did address that, and you'll see a slide later here that shows the breakdown of what essential workers will be receiving. The third category is to backfill a reduction in revenues, and there is a very specific calculation that needs to be done in order to fill, to, to define whether or not we are eligible for this category. And unfortunately, as I mentioned before, we are not eligible. Category 3 has the most flexibility to spend the money in. Because we are not eligible for it, it makes it a lot more restrictive as to how we can spend the funds. And then finally, the fourth category is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And these are, these are items that we'll go over in more detail a little bit later. So starting with the first category, public health and emergency or negative economic impact, again, this, the eligible uses include assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, specifically to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Negative economic impact, we can assist households, support for small businesses, and hospitality sectors. Some of the items that we are promoting or asking for funding under this category include the Rad Card Program. The Rad Card Program is essentially, and we did discuss this a little bit before, it's essentially a app-based program. So if somebody wanted to participate in this program, they would download an app to either their iPhone or whatever type of smartphone that they have. The app would then allow that person to go to Los Vanas. It would show them all the different small businesses that are participating and where the funding can be spent. If they put $50 on their card, then they would be matched an additional $50. So instead of having $50 to expand at a store downtown, they would now have $100 to spend at the store downtown. One of the benefits of this card is that it has immediate spending impact. You do not have to spend the entire $100 at one store. So you can, you can spend $50 at one store, you can spend $50 at another participating store. You are allowed to buy the card in $25 implements, so it's 25, 50, 75, up to $100, and you will be matched up to $100. It does have a long-term benefit to small businesses. So this makes people more aware of businesses that maybe they didn't know were there before, and so now they realize that it's there, and now maybe they want to go back and spend more money at that business. So that is one of the, um, benefits of the council tonight is to commit.
Ms. Roll call again?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I have a question. In regards to the Rad Card Program, you said spending the money downtown. Is this for any business, whether it's downtown or on Pacheco Boulevard? If they apply to be in this program, the money can be spent there?
That's correct. We set the parameters to the type of businesses that it is. So I just mentioned downtown as an example, I'm sorry, but yes, we can spend it. It's up to the business to participate. So if the, the business would like to participate, then yes, it would be citywide. And it limits spending to the city of Los Vanas, so when you go on the app, it'll show you the stores that participate, but you have a special code for it. So if, if I were to buy money in both Newman, Lodi, Los Vanas, I would have a different scan for each city to ensure that the money that Newman gave me isn't being spent in Los Vanas and that my Los Vanas funding isn't being spent someplace else. So it's very specific to the town that's here. It can only be spent in our town with our participating vendors. And it is monitored outside. They do all the monitoring, they pay the, they pay the businesses, and then we get a reporting on how the money is spent. So the proposal is to give 1.5, or I'm sorry, to, to fund this for $1 million. Ken, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Lambert? For per individual that, for each program, you said it was up to $100. But they run out of that $100. Are they able to buy back into it again?
No.
It's just one time buy per person?
Yes, that is correct. And I was going to check with the Rad Card if this program is funded, to see if that, if that's something maybe the city could opt out of, if we wanted to allow them to do it more, but the, with the program is running right now, it's a $100 limit. But the way the program is run right now, it's a hundred dollar limit. So you spend a hundred dollars of your own money, you get a hundred dollars of the ARPA funding. So the proposal is to fund this program up to a million dollars. Um, and the hope is to do it in either two hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand increments. This way, it ensures us that if the program is successful, we can fund, we can add more funding to it. If it is not successful, after the first two hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand dollars, we can back out of the program and not continue on. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility as to whether or not we want to continue with the program. Um, the second proposed amount is to invest in technology and equipment. One of the allowable uh categories under respond to public health emergency is to allow um public safety to purchase things that help basically um or I guess effectively respond to the increase in in crime and violence because of COVID. So it allows us to buy technology um to to help respond to this. So what we're asking for is a hundred thousand dollars at this point in time. Um, of course, I'm sure the chief would be happy if the council wanted to provide more. He can always use more technology and there's quite a few items that fit in this category. What are asked for tonight is a hundred thousand dollars and that's to purchase equipment to conduct exams on electronic devices. Uh, the third bullet point here is to invest in parks on the qualified census tract. So again, as I mentioned, um within the categories themselves, they become a little bit more restrictive. So ARPA funding does allow for us to invest in parks, um public plazas and other public outdoor recreation spaces. However, in order to do so, it has to be in the qualified census tract. And so let me um, let me switch my screens quickly. So I can share with council what the qualified census tract is, just to give you a better idea of what we're talking about. So you should see a map of the city now. And the red area is what is considered the qualified census tract. So we have Badger Flat here, um bordered by Pacheco, Mercy Springs, and then it cuts across Wilmot, up North Street and across Overland. Everything that's in the red area is considered considered the qualified census tract. So the ask tonight is to um, it's for two hundred thousand dollars. And that's to help either replace um the existing park equipment that's along the rail trail. So we have fitness equipment down the rail trail now. So it's to either replace that equipment with new equipment or to add additional equipment um to that. And that's a two hundred thousand dollar ask. Let me go back to my presentation here. Sorry, bear with me, please. Upgrades to city-owned property is also something that's allowable under um this category. And what what is allowable is anything that's considered um. A jail area is allowable. We're not asking anything for like the jail area because everybody's cramped in there. However, we might come back and ask for the new future station. But what the ask is tonight is upgrades to city-owned property and it has to do with the HVAC systems. So we can go through the city, look whose HVAC systems are poor and then replace them accordingly. So obviously, it filters the air, it's better for breathing, it's better when we're packing everybody in a workspace for the the flow. And the next one is the employee COVID testing program. So as of right now, we are not required to um test or make sure everybody has a vaccine. However, I'm sure you're all aware that not only have the feds, you know, tried to make this mandatory, but if Cal OSHA implements that the city has to mandatory test to allow employees to come to work, that cost would need to come from someplace. We did some research because the school district is currently doing it. And preliminary estimates are that it would cost us over a million dollars to do this for a year. So we are asking to allocate one point five million dollars um potentially for city employees to be tested weekly um in lieu of having a vaccination. And then also homeless assistant program. So as I mentioned, we do have project room key and we do have temporary um shelter that is funded through April. However, this is in addition to that. This is people that maybe don't fit into that temporary shelter. This is so the city has their own response to COVID. It's a small ask, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And the intent is basically um hotel vouchers, to give hotel vouchers to somebody who may need to get off of the streets to recover from COVID or to not be exposed to COVID. And I know this is a lot of information. Um, we do have four different categories to go through. Um, I did, now I have the camera view. I wasn't seeing the camera view before. So if you raise your hand, I will be able to stop and answer your questions. So moving on to category two, this is, yes, Ken?
Mr. Lambert, I see Mr. Lambert's hand up. Uh, just to follow up on that question earlier, um is it possible that this can be changed per person? If, you know, I mean, uh, or or is it just going to be limited to one person? Or one, one time, the one time uh use, up to a hundred dollars?
Oh, on the Radcard program?
Yes.
So right now, yes, it's limited to to one person, one use. You can get up to a hundred dollars. So if you decide to do fifty dollars and get your fifty dollars, you can come back and get fifty dollars later, but only up to a hundred dollars.
Okay. The only reason why I ask that is I, we only get a hundred people that ask for it, you know, throughout our city that want to, you know, uh, uh, participate in this program. You know, it's, but they may want to continue to participate in the program if nobody else is participating. I I just wanted to see if that was able to be changed, just in case.
It was, it's something that I could reach out to the administration of the Radcard program. Um, but I'm not aware of any other agency that allows that. So I I'm not sure that they do, but I will double check if we decide to participate in the program. I do have to bring, this is just a um workshop for everybody to give them ideas on what we should spend the money on. Um, I am asking for direction tonight on some of the things that you would like to see come forward. So if this is one of the things that you would like to see come forward, then I will have more information when I bring it back to council for approval.
Okay, thank you, Sonia.
And that'll be one of the items, Ken, that I will um make sure to have the answer for.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question on the Radcard, uh, Sonia. Uh, you can buy up to a hundred dollars uh and get a match for a hundred dollars. So uh, if someone's buying that card, do they have to designate where they're going to spend it? Or can you spend it, you know, I I heard you say you could spend money at one store or another, but uh you don't have to designate how much is going to be spent at any store until you make that purchase. Am I correct?
No, it's, you're right. It's, it's basically like a gift card. You can get a barcode to scan. And if I want to go spend fifteen dollars in one store and seventy five dollars in the next, I can, I can definitely do that.
Okay.
Um, you don't have to spend it all in one day. Uh, there, as of right now, there is no limit. It wouldn't expire. So you have time to go, you know, out and do all your shopping and it wouldn't expire. I have one from a different community that I, that I visited one time and I still have, you know, a few books sitting on there and I probably won't go back until I'm ready to do Christmas shopping. So it's out there ready for me to use.
Thank you very much.
And it works in both restaurants, um, some of the businesses, in fact, I want to sneak peek. Some of the businesses um are anywhere from a boutique jewelry store to clothing stores, restaurants. Um, I I honestly picked up wine with it in Lodi. Um, it has a wide variety of uses. So um, it's just up to the store on whether or not they want to to participate. I've had, I've had lunch on it, you know, so it's, it's a, a vast variety of what uh business wants to participate.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for that presentation, uh, Ms. Williams. Uh, I had a question regarding uh which stores or is there a restriction on which stores can participate and which stores cannot?
So yes, we would put the restriction on what stores can participate. And um, we would limit it to small businesses. So obviously, stores like Target, Walmart, you know, the big box stores like that, they wouldn't be able to participate. We can do it um by the number of employees that they have. We can do it by revenues. There's, we could just do it by parameters of the city. There's a lot of different options um that we are allowed to set to ensure. Now, most communities have um a vibrant downtown where it's almost limited to the downtown area. But as I mentioned, I've used the card in Lodi and Lodi is pretty much spread out everywhere. Um, and I've used it all over, the same as the city of Turlock. They have it in both their downtown area and outside of the downtown area. So it's, it's up to the council and how they want to set the boundaries. But Radcard's intentions are not to include big box stores.
Very good. Thank you very much. I was concerned about that, so that was my concerns to rest. Second question I have uh would be, or concern with this program would be that uh some businesses were just starting off and people weren't aware of them. Uh, they were very negatively impacted by it. My concern is that there'll be a congregation to a select number of stores. And the, the intent here is to help the entire business community that was affected. And so again, you know, you, you can't control where people will buy, but generally, people will will return to the same stores. And and I'm just uh concerned that some of the businesses out there may not benefit from this program where the intent or the spirit of the law is to help all the businesses that were impacted by COVID. So I'm not sure how we can mitigate or address that.
So the reason why I proposed this program versus a small business assistant type of program is because we did try that with the CARES funding. We set aside fifty thousand dollars. Of course, we didn't have this much funding when we had CARES, but we did set aside fifty thousand dollars in funding for small business assistance. There are a lot of restrictions, as I've mentioned, um, to the program. And one of the things that happened in CARES is they have to file an application and they have to prove that they've been impacted by COVID. I believe that I received five to seven applications and I awarded three um, three grants in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars each. So I didn't feel like it was extremely impactful. Um, I didn't get the response I was hoping for. That is also an allowable program here in ARPA because it has the same restrictions as far as a business having to provide me a profit and loss statement. You know, they have to prove that they have a business license, which obviously we can look up, but that they have all the permits that go along with that. And there's a lot of caveats that go into it, but I didn't think that we would get the response because of course, we've tried to do this before. Um, also researching this, I've noticed that a lot of communities are sidestepping it for the same reason. And I put more, more efforts into this because it's more of a um gift card program. A lot of communities were having a lot of success with the um, the gift card program. Specifically, the Rad program, um, communities started out with private funding. So they had sponsors when this first started in Modesto. Uh, they had private sponsors that started the program and then they went on to use CARES funding to do it. And it's so successful that they re-upped it again with ARPA funding. And so I know that the communities are different, but this, this goes anywhere from the city of Newman utilizing it, Oakdale, Turlock, Modesto, so small communities and large communities who have continued to revamp the funding that they're putting in there because of the success they have found. And unfortunately, it doesn't touch everybody, but um, you know, we could do our best to assist the Rad people in uh communicating to businesses that they should participate. When you go to the app itself, you see a listing of all the businesses there. So even if you're not aware that business exists, you can click on it, you can find where that business is and maybe it leads you to someplace new. So I, I don't know if there is a way for us to touch everybody because of the restrictions. I felt um that this was more beneficial than other programs.
Okay.
But I'm happy to discuss any other thoughts that council may have.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think that Mr. Lambert and then back to Ms. Lewis. I believe that's the order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sonia, um, the procedure for the businesses uh to uh participate, have, have we already come about how we're going to uh present this to the businesses or, or is that something we're going to discuss also?
The, the Radcard program?
Yes, ma'am.
So the Radcard program, um, we would discuss how it is being presented, but it is presented completely by, by the administration of the Radcard program. So they um, they handle everything. They have a website, they have the app page, they do the community outreach. They take care of everything for us.
So that, that, that would be, so that'll actually be where the business would actually go and uh sign up to be on that program, correct?
That is correct. And that's where they, they have an app as well that when the payment's being made, it goes to whatever type of device that, that the business has. Um, whether they have an iPad, a phone, they have options on how they want to, to be able to scan that person's code. Um, but Radcard takes care of everything for that and the city does not um have to worry about that.
Okay.
But we can, in addition to them doing that, make sure that we advertise it on our Facebook pages, you know, point them in the right direction. So we'll do our best to work with them, um, if the city doesn't like to do this, to make sure most businesses are aware of what is happening.
All right. Thank you so much, Sonia.
So uh, what I'm understanding is this Radcard program has a lot fewer limitations has a better se- better success rate in getting money back into businesses that were affected, correct?
In other communities, yes, it has been very successful. And like I said, the reason I did ask for up, to spend up to a million dollars, but you know, I'm more aware that it might not work in our community. So I, I, you know, the thought was to do it in smaller increments. We'll feed them two hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand and if it works, then we'll give them a little bit more money. Because obviously, if it's working, then it is helping um the community on an ongoing basis. So even if they only spend a hundred dollars in the store today, maybe they come back and spend a hundred dollars of their own money because, you know, they had a good experience or they found good products or they enjoyed the food, whatever the situation may be.
Wow, very good. I see Mr. Yamas's hand up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, final thought here is, uh, so you would be able to have real-time uh data um response from where it's happening. So then you, you would see, okay, we're having ten of the seventy five businesses that have the most benefit from this. And so you would be able to adjust or respond or do something to try to, again, to, to spread the wealth, if you will, correct?
Correct. So if we start out small, if we start out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and in the first month, it's gone and I'm going to be running to council and saying, hey, hey, it worked and you gave me up to a million. So I'm going to replenish it right away. But if it's not working, I'm going to say, okay, let's, you know, I don't want that million dollars after all. Let's go ahead and reassess what we're doing here, maybe find a different program, you know, something a little bit more creative. Maybe even hold the workshop for small businesses to see what's going to work for you. Are you willing to do these applications type of things? But again, during my research, this seems to be a very beneficial program to a lot of communities in our area. And I feel that once it hits us, Merced County will probably take it on itself.
Fantastic. Looks like you, you've done your, your research and you are the resident expert. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So moving to the category two, premium pay. Um, premium pay category is to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID. Um, this is basically businesses, city hall that didn't close down, the police officers, fire. Um, if you remember, council approved premium pay. It was a three-year plan. The increments were different depending on uh the hiring date of employees. So it was forty eight hundred dollars for employees that were hired before January twenty twenty one, twenty four hundred dollars for employees hired after that and twelve hundred part employees, uh, part-time employees. And um, this is obviously because everybody had to be here, whether it was at city hall, whether it was in the fire department, public works, police responding to COVID, making sure people's water was still on, getting new services, you know. Um, so we, we did this program and it's a three-year program. The total amount that has already been allocated to this is one point seven million dollars. We may come in under this amount because as employees change, then, you know, the categories would drop down. And or we have fewer employees perhaps, it'll drop down. So we may spend up to one point seven, but it will not, it will not be more than one point seven. Category three, this is. Category three, this is the big one. This is the fun formula that I put in the staff report that I'm, I'm sure was fun and confusing. But basically what this says is that recipients may use funds to replace lost revenue. The Treasury Department has very specific methodology to calculate lost revenue. And we have to identify based on their calculations if we have a shortfall or not. If we did have a shortfall, we would have had a broad latitude to use in funding. And it would have been, made all of our lives so much easier, but unfortunately, we're not there. Instead, we're here at this chart. And what this chart tells us is that our counterfactual revenue or what we're saying we should have got in the year of COVID. So this is not just general fund revenue, this is all general revenue. So whatever the state requires to be general revenue, which unfortunately excludes things like water bills. As we should control great loss in utility billing, but it excludes water. It excludes other things like debt services and things that don't really factor in. But what it does include are sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, not only sales tax for regular sales tax, but includes measure H, it includes measure P. And one of the reasons why we are not showing the loss in revenue is because of the timing of measure H. Measure H started in 2019 and it included three months. But then the next year, which counts our revenue, included the whole year. And so unfortunately, because of that, I mean, obviously, we're very thankful and grateful for measure H and it hasn't impacted the community in a positive way. It's just hurting us now in this area. But we're not gonna complain about it because we'll find other ways to spend the money. So based on measure H and the fact that our permitting process didn't slow down any during COVID, we are showing that our actual revenue was 57 million. And our counterfactual revenue, which is basically what we should have made, being 56.4 million. So we don't have a loss here and we don't qualify for this. The next year, which they do this on a calendar year instead of our fiscal year, but it still works out. The next year's counterfactual revenue, which is an increase of 9.6% based on the last three years' actual increase to revenue. We can have revenue of 61.8 million dollars. My estimate is that we're gonna finish the year at 62 million dollars, which again would mean that we don't qualify. However, we haven't allocated all the funding. And we have time after the end of the year to go back and calculate and put, plug in the actuals and see if we are. And even if we only qualify for $500,000, then it'll, staff will recommend to council that, yes, let's put that $500,000 aside because as I mentioned before, it's a lot less restrictive as to what we could do with the money. This counterfactual revenue is a consistent increase of the 9.54%. And so each year we'll go back and we'll plug in our actual revenues based on that amount. And at any given time, if the money has not yet been allocated, then council will still have the ability to allocate any loss that we might come up with. So that's just a placeholder. One of the reasons why we're not, we're not in a rush to allocate the money is just to, to keep a, a watch on this to see if it changes. Also, one of the reasons to keep a watch on it is we're still working on the interim final rule. The Department of Treasury has not released its findings on comments. Several cities commented, they're in the same situation as we are with our measure H. And so several cities have commented to the Department of Treasury, is there a better way to handle this? So we're waiting on comments like that and we're waiting for the Department of Treasury to release the final rule. There is a possibility, even though it might be a slight possibility, that maybe they can change the calculation a little bit to allow for things like measure H. And so that was anticipated to be released at the end of September of this year. It didn't happen. One of the reasons why they pushed back the reporting is because it didn't happen. So we're still waiting for responses to our comments. Hopefully we get them and hopefully it changes this number from zero and does allow for us to have a loss. So we'll keep council updated on that. And then the fourth and final category is to invest in infrastructure. The infrastructure that we are allowed to invest in is limited to water, wastewater and broadband. And within those limitations are additional limitations. So we could do water treatment, transmission and distribution, rehabilitation, decontamination. Wastewater, some of the projects we could do is construction of treatment works. Efficiency, efficiency and reuse matters. And then broadband is very restrictive in the sense of it tells us exactly what the speeds, the download speeds, the upload speeds need to be for broadband. And that is restricted to either unserved or underserved households or businesses. So again, those are very limited. We do have it as a point of discussion tonight. And Nicole, our interim public works director, is looking into programs that we have in both water and wastewater that may apply. So these are things that we can bring back to council in the future if we feel that we have a project that fits into it. And if council shows concern about wanting, you know, to maybe invest some of the funds in, in that direction. So as a summary, the proposed uses tonight, and again, this is just for, for council to give staff direction. Yes, no, we want to do this and us to bring back at a later date and not asking you to make any final decisions tonight, but just direction. Premium pay is 1.7 million. That is already allotted. So that's on the summary, just to give you a dollar amount. And then what falls under category one or the public health emergency category, again, is the Radcard. Up to a million dollars. Equipment and technology, and again, this is police equipment and technology in response to the rise in, in crime and violence. Invest in parks, in this case, outdoor fitness, $200,000. Invest in HVAC, vac system upgrades for $250,000. Potential COVID testing. So if we do allocate this money, it's just a holding spot. If CalAsha doesn't require it, then obviously we'd come back to council and have you reallocate the money. And then homeless assistance, $100,000. That leaves us an unallocated balance. Basically, we still have to decide what we want to do with our other 4.9 million dollars. Again, I mentioned some of the things that we can do are water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, broadband. And then I'm happy to talk about any alternative projects or suggestions that council might have. In fact, I think that's a good time to do it. So maybe we can get a little bit of feedback on what is proposed here tonight. What you council would like to see move forward, if any of these items.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. What I'm gonna do now is, we have a number of people in the public that would like to comment. And so if you would raise your hand, if you would like to comment at this time on the ARPA funding, I'll look for raised hands here and call upon you if you're still there with us there. So I see Ms. Valadeo has opened her camera. If she'd like to speak, go ahead and unmute there if you would, Dana.
Well, I was gonna let Lori go first, but I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, there's, I see, I see a hand raised there. So Lori, are you, are you going to go?
Sure.
If you want to speak, okay, very good. All right. So go ahead, Ms. Bellotti.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Okay. You know, I didn't respond to the city survey because when I read it, I felt it didn't give anyone a chance to address the need for our residents for recreational amenities. And there really wasn't a place for that on there. I would like to propose that a portion of that ARPA funds go towards building public pickleball courts in Los Angeles. This may seem like a trivial request compared to the problems we need to solve in Los Angeles. But recreation for Los Angeles residents should be a consideration in the big picture. If you look at the amenities Los Angeles has to keep our residents healthy and happy, you'll see that we don't have a lot in our town. Please consider the ways that access to public pickleball courts could help many of our community residents recover from this pandemic. I want to refer to the ARPA document because I read it after I read this, after I tried to do the survey and maybe you can under, better understand my rationale. There's, under the temporary nature of APRA funds, there's a section that says investment in critical infrastructure is particularly well-suited use of ARPA funds because it is a non-recurring expenditure that can be targeted to strategically important long-term assets that provide benefits over many years. However, CARES should be taken to assess any ongoing operating costs that may be associated with the project. Pickleball courts are, once they're built, they're a non-recurring expenditure. They're taken care of by the people who are using them. And there's also a place that would be number three, respond to the public health emergency or associated negative impacts. I heard down under number C, letter C, I heard something mentioned about a fitness track on the rail trail. And that was under investments in parks in the qualified census tract. Programs and services designed to build stronger neighborhoods and communities to address health disparities. Investments in parks may be responsive to the needs of impacted communities by promoting outdoor recreation to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The funds will be used to build an outdoor fitness court. This is where I feel pickleball courts would be a very good use of extra funds from ARPA because people, it's going to help, help people's health and activity level and social fitness in our, in our town. And we really need that. So I, I would like to propose that the AR, a portion of the funds go towards building public pickleball courts. Please consider the need for people to become active and social after this devastating pandemic. Also consider how the presence of public pickleball courts would increase business in our shops, restaurants and hotels. Pickleball courts, active pickleball courts in the, I think you call it qualified census tract, could also prevent crime in that, in the area. And so that, that's my rationale for thinking about recreation and not just pickleball, but other recreation amenities. Spending a portion of these funds for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellotti. And nothing any citizen ever brings to this council is ever trivial. So whatever anyone wants to bring, you bring because we want to know. Mr. Leib's hand was up next, I believe.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I like your background.
Thank you very much. So most of you know me, but for the record, my name is Gene Leib and I'm the former publisher of The Enterprise for the past 20 years. And there's a new term in our world. It's called news desert. And currently, Los Angeles is a news desert, which is a community with limited access to the sort of credible and comprehensive community news and information that feeds democracy at the grassroots level. A newspaper is a reflection of the community it serves. Currently, The Enterprise is not serving our community well. I think most of you can attest to that because you've lived in Los Angeles long enough. If you've seen The Enterprise now compared to what it was years ago, I think you would agree that it is not the same newspaper. It is not serving the public well. And within a few months, the current enterprise as we know it today will probably be closed and not exist at all. It is not something that the current owner, owning company is gonna keep. And it will go by the wayside like most community newspapers that do not cover local news. So my plan is to recreate The Enterprise and bring back local, unbiased, fact-based, attributable, Los Angeles community journalism where all sides of issues are presented and the public can decide who or what they want to believe. And on this call, there's a gentleman named Hank Van Der Veen. So Hank and I worked at, with McClatchy. Hank left McClatchy years ago. And he now owns 209 Multimedia. 209 Multimedia owns eight community newspapers. Mantega Bulletin, Turlock Journal, Oakdale Leader. And he recently purchased the Gustine Standard and the Newman Westside Index. And when he did that, he worked with the, both city councils for the city of Newman and the city of Gustine. And they worked out a financial agreement whereby money can be, ARPA money was used to help with the startup and operational cost of, of the newspapers. And so what I am proposing is that we create a new business, a new company, Hank and I, and we're requesting ARPA funds to help with the operational capital since accounts receivables are anticipated to lag behind operational expenditures. The Enterprise currently has a masthead that, that's, that's the name. And other than the name, it has nothing else. The, the owners in 2020 came in, you know, told me that they were closing the office here in Los Angeles and they were relieving me of my position. They eliminated my position due to COVID. They said we could, they could no longer operate given the atmosphere that COVID was causing. And I want to bring that back. By having a reputable newspaper with quality journalism, it will enhance every aspect of the city that you guys are talking about right now and will help educate the public so they know what's happening in town. Ever since I was relieved of my duties, I talked to people sometimes every day on the street, asking me what's happening. They have no clue what's happening in town. And a newspaper does that. It keeps everyone educated and it, it covers the good and the bad. Not just the sensational headlines, but it covers the chicken barbecues and everything else. Many of which I'm still doing right now on my own and putting it on my own Facebook page. It'd be much better if I had an audience that could see it in print and online as well. And Hank is here as well on the call if you have any questions.
Mr. Leib, I had a question. You said that you were concerned that you wouldn't, there'd be a problem with generating ongoing operational money? Or is that what I heard?
So when you, yeah, so the, the way you fund a newspaper is through advertising dollars. And those are businesses that buy ads into the paper. And, but it's like the chicken and the egg. So you have to have something that people will see and like and then they'll buy into it. So I have to create, recreate an enterprise that, and, and prove to the readers that, you know, there's actual news and I'm actually gonna publish real news. And then, and then they'll start buying ads in the paper. But there's a period of time there that we're a lag that I'm gonna need some help in order to get that up and running.
Part of that. Okay. Do you have any idea of how much you, you would be asking for? Is that something you want to say, discuss with staff if we?
We could discuss that with staff. Yeah, it's, it's negotiable.
All right.
There's, there's, there's currently a, a plan that the city of Newman and Gustine approved with Hank that we could use as a, as a guide.
Okay. I see Ms. Lewis has her hand up. I imagine she has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to know approximately what they're asking for tonight. I, I don't think that this council should be not privy to hear that information. So yes, if the council decides to move forward with something like this, certainly that would be worked out with staff, but I want to hear the numbers tonight.
Okay. Well, the, the plan that Newman and Gustine worked on, it was a three-pronged plan. So it, it included ARPA money, it included a no-interest loan, and it included a commitment of ads, public notices, because the city does publish their own public notices. So it was, the dollar amounts totaled $165,000 over six months.
What was the ARPA portion?
ARPA portion was $90,000.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And thank you, Mr. Leib.
Thank you.
Ms. Valadeo?
Good evening. My name is Dana Valadeo and I am a retired teacher here in Los Angeles and a third-generation Los Angeles person. Um, I just kind of want to repeat some of the things that Lori Bellotti said about recreation in Los Manos. COVID-19 has definitely put a toll on people's health. People have stayed inside for over a year, and that has caused their health-
Lori, can you interrupt real quick? We're getting some feedback. Are you, do you have two devices on?
Yeah, she's going to move, hold on.
Yeah, because it's like screeching, I don't know if anybody else hears.
Yeah, I was thinking, uh-
Sorry.
That's okay. I heard it too, I just didn't know if you could hear it.
Thank you.
COVID-19 has put a toll on many people, and I know that when Lori and I are starting to look at different ways to find funding to put pickleball courts in, we know how important, um, the health and recreation of the people of Los Manos are. And the CDC right now is saying that anything you can do outside is probably going to benefit the people and keep them safe from COVID-19. I know that these, um, A R P A funds, um, can be used for parks and recreation. So we'd like to see you consider maybe putting that in, just because we have ninety members in our pickleball group, group who play pickleball, and on average, we have thirty out there a day. So, you know, I'm thinking of your exercise track, and I don't know how many people use that exercise track in a day, but I know there are dozens of people who play pickleball every day, and it would be just outstanding if we had some public courts for them to play in and keep that activity. I know during COVID, I'm lucky enough to have a pickleball court at my house, so I wasn't having to play in a group, and I can go out with my husband and hit the ball back and forth, and I don't know what I would have done without that, um, health factor for me to be able to stay in shape and stay sane and not be inside my house all the time. I just know that pickleball courts will not only provide the health of the people of Los Manos, but also for Los Manos in many other ways. I attend many different avenues of playing pickleball in different towns, and many towns have pickleball courts, and I know it brings people into town that spend money in town, and I know this is not about, um, this funding, but if we had public courts, we'd probably be able to encourage people from other towns to come. I also know, we just went to St. George, Utah, and all over that town, I think it's one of the fastest-growing cities right now in the United States, and when they're building their developments, they have giant posters that read, pickleball courts being built, and that attracts people to go in and move there. So if you've not heard of pickleball, it is up and coming. And I just want Los Manos to be one of those places, because I think we're going to lose, um, the momentum if we don't decide, hey, this is something that would, would benefit our town and the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So do, do, does the city presently have any pickleball courts at all?
Well, we have two at the community center that are inside that were closed for a year due to COVID. Um, so there's two there, and that's where we, um, started out, and sometimes you wait thirty minutes just to get into a game, because there's so many people waiting, because there's four people on a court. There's also three painted courts out, um, on Pioneer Road, but we compete with, uh, basketball players, and basketball's also very big in this town, which is wonderful to see the kids out there. And usually, they're pretty friendly, and, um, we are usually out there first, because we're early birds, and we'll usually scoot over and let them have a court. But lately, when I drive by, I see a lot of people playing basketball out there. So we have two at the community center and three painted lines out at Pioneer Court, but you have to have your own nets to be able to play out there.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Maloney?
I have two comments that I need to read into the record, I just didn't want that to get missed.
Okay, very good. Um, I don't see any other hands raised at this time, so go ahead and read those now, please.
Okay, the first comment, it says, city council members, I understand that there are funds available through the American Rescue Plan Act. I would love to see some of the funds go to the arts in Los Manos. A family concert series in the Henry Miller Plaza would be wonderful and perfect for the citizens of Los Manos. Fresh air and music would benefit all. Music can relax the mind, energize the body, and even help people better manage pain. It reduces anxiety and stress, and who doesn't need that? Let's plant some concerts in the plaza. Thank you, Cindy Roloffs. Um, the next comment. The City of Los Manos has asked for community input in regards to the American Rescue Plan funding. The following I hope you would consider for the mental and physical health of the members of our community. I would like to refer to the guiding principles for use of ARPA funds as stated. Investment in critical infrastructure is particularly well-suited use of ARPA funds because it is non-recurring expenditure that can be targeted to strategically important, long-term assets that provide benefits over many years. Operating and maintenance costs for pickleball facility would be minimum. Once constructed, there would be very little to take care of. The players using the courts would be responsible for the cleanup and monitoring. Pickleball courts would bring revenue into our town. If the courts are placed in a central location, such as the rail trail area, locals and visitors alike would use our shops, restaurants, and hotels. We are a central location in the valley and would be a big draw for people coming to play. Our city continues to grow, and along with that growth, we need to provide more recreation opportunities for our citizens. I feel Los Manos has fallen behind in providing outlets for activities, and pickleball courts would be one of the best ways you could fill a void that our city currently has. Pickleball is played by people of all ages and backgrounds. In addition, pickleball is an outdoor activity which is appropriate for mitigating the spread of COVID-19. Respectfully submitted, Tom Bellotti.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. So, um, we have this evening from, what I'm seeing from the public, uh, pickleball, the newspaper, and the outdoor concert series. And so, uh, I'm going to go to, uh, council and ask each council member to, if you'd comment on staff's recommendations and public recommendations, which of those you support, uh, you'd like to see us pursue. Um, so I'll start with Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Okay, so I'm pulling up my list here. Um, so as far as equipment and technology, is that hundred grand, is it just for PD, or is that being, uh, split with fire department? Does fire department need anything as well? Sonia?
It's based on the response to crime and violence, so it's not for the fire department, it's strictly for police.
Okay, okay. And then as far as investing in parks, what are our limitations in there? Can we invest more in some equipment on the rail trail? It's probably just going to fall apart like the last stuff, it just, I don't know if it's really getting used or if it's really vital. Um, can we invest in, uh, more of the infrastructure aspect of some of these, uh, recreation locations? Because let's, let's just face, face it, if, if we're going to put pickleball courts in at some point down the road, hopefully sooner than later, we're, we're going to probably need bathrooms, we're going to need a parking lot, we're going to need curb cutter, lighting, things like that. You know, the way I see it, to be all, all honest, a lot of times with recreational activities, they go in trance, whether they last five years, ten years, fifty years. But if we have the infrastructure in there, we can always wipe the surface clean and put a different recreation on there. So I'm curious on how much of that we can use for some of the vital costly infrastructure.
So, um, we can make adjustments to, basically, it could be investments in parks and public pa- plazas, it's pretty general, but where it's not general is the communities that we can do it in. And again, I'm trying to, I closed out my map, so, um, we do not have a lot of parks that are in the, those areas, um. Can you all see my map now? Okay. So the red area is where we're limited to, to doing these investments in parks and public plazas. So, um, it does include the rail trail, it does include Colorado, um, park and a couple of the other small parks, um, Peach Park, is that what it's called, Peach Park? Um, what else is over there?
So I was kind of more thinking, kind of down on one of our properties, we're going to plan on getting maybe something on the rail trail, somewhere where it might make the most sense on there, since that land doesn't need to be developed, we can't use it for housing. It seems like, uh, recreational activity probably would make the most sense on that land, because I think to me it'd have the less restrictions, but, uh,
And we are also limited to what we own on that land, so unless we're willing to purchase it, because we don't own all of it outright. Some of it is for governmental use, and some of it is to be resold. So if, for instance, we decided we wanted to put a pickleball court on the rail trail, we would have to have a big enough area, and, you know what, let me see if I have that PowerPoint. Um, I brought it up when we were talking about this, okay, let me, let me share this screen with you. So this is, uh, maybe you guys remember, uh, when we split out the parcels, A is where the rail trail goes along by Henry Miller Plaza. Henry Miller Plaza and the area adjacent to it, it's on the corner of Seventh and Eighth Street, are governmental use. Um, that obviously is big enough for pickleball area, but based on last week's council meeting, there's plans for it. Um, C is another large area, however, as an example, that's future development, which means that if the city were going to add any type of large project, they would first have to buy the land, because we do have a reimbursement agreement with the different agencies, and they are all entitled to a part of the proceeds from that. Um, moving down further on the rail trail, the same goes here. So the se- this B area here is, uh, governmental, or, um, future development, it would have to be purchased. The rail trail itself is owned by the city. The workout equipment that's along here fits into these areas that are already pre-existing. Um, and just to show you another parcel, again, the city owns A, would not own B. So those are just some of the examples along the rail trail, and that in order to do too much on the rail trail, then it, it, it does start getting into the, the discussion of purchasing the, the property. And the other area-
Will we be able to use these finds, these funds to be able to purchase some of that property for future recreation?
No, we can do it for infrastructure, we cannot do it to, to buy property.
Okay, just for the infrastructure improvements on the property?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's not immediate fix then for?
No. So another park that is in that general area of the, uh, QCT is Colorado Ballpark. Now, um, we did apply for a grant for that park. If the park comes through, I don't know that the grant completely covers the amount of money that we need. We may need additional funding, in which case ARPA can pick up the funding for Colorado, because it falls in the QCT.
Okay, I know one concern with Colorado Ballpark is just when's that pickup, it blows that whiffle ball all over the place. So if we are going to designate that area for pickleball, it just keep that in mind.
No, I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't suggesting out of adding pickleball, in fact, I don't know that it will fit. I just mean the improvements that we already need to make to, to Colorado, to bring it up to date.
So pickleball in general would be difficult based on our constraints that we have. With this funding right now, we'd have to find alternative funding source.
We would have to-
It sounds like.
Figure out how to fit it in the, uh, QCT. So in order to do any type of park investment, it has to fit into that QCT, so it is limited there. Again, if we've qualified under revenue reimbursement, it would be a little bit more lenient, but we don't. So here we are trying to fit it into that red square.
Okay, well, I know, I know you, staff, you guys are kind of tackling this, and you guys, you guys get a lot bigger picture of what, uh, says, uh, council gets when, uh, trying to select sites and, uh, you know, exclude certain sites, so, um, I just, you know, it, it'd be nice at some point in the future, and it probably, it may not be with this funding, to be able to put, uh, pickleball courts in. I'm not a pickleball player, but I do see the advantage to Los Manos by having something pretty nice out there, because let's face it, these pickleball players, they go crazy over this stuff, and people come in, or they travel all over to play these different tournaments. And I'm thinking, these are people that might eat at a sandwich shop or stay at a hotel, and these are things where we might be able to collect extra tax on. So that's where I'm kind of looking at it, as far as what can we make off this in the backend.
And I understand, and if council wants to give staff direction to see if it fits someplace in this red square, uh, staff would be happy to do so.
Okay, uh, i- if there's something, I'll let you guys brainstorm on that, if there's something that may work, and if you guys can, can reach out to the pickleball community and ask them, you know, maybe some, for some tips and things like that, because again, they know that sport really well, where it may work, and maybe see if there's any options out there that we might be able to do. Again, and, you know, I'm, I'm big on infrastructure, but if we don't have the land for it, that's, that's another challenge, so. Um, okay, so I guess that's on the recreation. Wastewater infrastructure, could we add in, say, sewer and water to, say, a business park? That's not master planned yet, can we start working on planning that with these dollars, or it's only in those areas?
No, the, the qualified census check does not, the water projects do not need to fall in those areas. This is a separate category.
Okay, so, so one of our biggest issues for attracting big business is having utilities or having shovel-ready dirt, right? And that would include utilities up to the property or close to it. Now might be the time to start discussing that.
So you want to do new, new business development?
Well, whole idea is try to, try to use these monies, the monies that we're getting to, to attract future dollars. That's something that we've never really done before in Los Manos, when we'll get things on the front end and not on the backend.
I think as far as water systems though, new system development is allowable under ARPA. Um, so it is something at one of the projects that we could look into for, for staff, new system. I think that's what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Development, okay.
And I'm, yeah, I'm not talking about redoing what we have, but just adding in more water and sewer infrastructure, so it makes it that much easier for, um, industry to come in. You know, who designate like an industrial park.
Lean it towards COVID, I have to lean it towards COVID. So I could do my research on that specifically, and when we bring our package back to council, present that?
Yeah, yeah, so anything that we can do to help, help, you know, in- increase what we have or strengthen it to where it makes it a little bit more attractive for bi- big business to come in. So broadband, that looks like it's just limited to unserved and underserved, can you emphasize on that a little bit?
Yes, so it's basically, so it is a duplicate effort. Um, the state is doing a lot of things with broadband, school districts also have got broadband money. So again, this is a duplicate effort. Um, as far as underserved homes, it's not really something that the city could reach out to, because this is non-recurring pause. Putting the infrastructure in there doesn't make it, give the ability for that homeowner maybe to, you know, actually continue to purchase it themselves. So I think it limits us there, especially with the high costs on the, the speeds that are required. Um, where we thought it would be more beneficial is an open type of area like the community center, where maybe we offer the speeds there, and we have free Wi-Fi usage for people to be able to come in. So it's something that we're looking at, um, something that we're getting quotes on, not only the community center where people can go and use that broadband, but maybe someplace like City Hall that has a lobby area that if people need it to do it, they could come here as well. However, um, cost-wise and with the, the system that we're already putting in as far as our break points and things like that, we don't know that it, um, it, it will actually benefit the community, and it does have to benefit, um, the community. So it's an underserved area, the community center, and we would allow people that maybe don't have access otherwise to come in and access it free of charge. So it's something we're doing for, for the research in. Initial research does not show that we have the ability to do what is required of us with the ARPA funds. And it's better lucked.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound really feasible, and doesn't sound like it's going to help out the majority, especially if it doesn't cover, cover the commercial side too. So, okay, uh, so my biggest things are, uh- So, okay, uh, so my biggest things are, um. Water and waste infrastructure, improving that, so we can try to attract, uh, whether it's adding on new or. Strengthening what we already have, so we can attract big business or support big business. And then as far as invest in parks outdoors, if we can take a look at, um. I'd really like to find a home for pickleball courts, um, and something where like I, like I mentioned that. If we have location, we have the, the infrastructure there to support it, parking lot, bathrooms, things like that, or if we're able to put that in at some point. The sport or the activity can always be changed out every twenty, thirty years, depending on what the trends are and what the needs are, so. That's how I kind of look at it, so kind of a universal ground. So, and that's all, everything else, everything else looks good.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, that, uh, that thinking ahead on the recreations and preparing for changes, I think is 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 very important. Excellent, um, Mr. Lambert.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I just wanna ask a quick question, maybe I didn't catch it earlier. How did we come up with that red area, Sonia?
Um, so it's, it's basically what we use uh, for our grants when we have the eligible area, this it's. Um, Stacy, can you help me out here? Are you on the line, Stacy? Nope, she got her. Maybe she's not here, so when we applied for, um.
Sorry, I'm right here.
Can you explain the map there for me, please, how, how we, how it came to be?
Sure, so those are our low to moderate income census tract, that is one census tract, however, we are. Able to capture low, moderate block groups in an one additional census tract. So, um, the main census tract is, um, I know it's listed on that map, I believe it's like twenty-two. Point zero one, that is one full census tract, and then, um, we're able to incorporate a couple of additional. Block groups, um, that also qualify for low to moderate income. Um, and that is below the, um, Merced County median household income.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is the, that is how we. This has been going on for a couple of years and we, we, we go off this map, so that's basically what we're going off now with that map?
Yes.
For, for a grant, okay. Is it possible that could change in the future?
Um, to explain, um, how that data, where that data comes from, um. High, it it probably isn't, um. That, that particular census tract. Um, does meet those qualifications for low to moderate income, but, um, going beyond those census tracts, so the ci-. To explain, the city only has four census tracts, um, going north. Um, has a higher disposable income, would not qualify, and then south, um. Definitely does not qualify, and then what it would then leave is, uh, all of the residents east of. Uh, Highway one sixty-five Mercy Springs Road, um, also with a higher disposable income, so it's not likely. That those census tracts will expand in the future.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, appreciate it, Stacy. So, I, I, I'm kind of following, uh, Councilmember Jones's part, recreation is one of my. Uh, deals too, if we can look into possibly helping out with that infrastructure and the sewer and wastewater, that's something for the future. For our, uh, uh, infrastructure also, um. Now, just, we'll get back to a couple of these, these others. The HVAC system, is that just for our, say, community center upgrades? The City Hall upgrades?
So yes, it would be specific to city buildings, so. We would go through city buildings that, well, uh, Community Center actually has a new one, so they wouldn't and. We wouldn't look at the PD because they're moving, so it would most likely be City Hall and then we would check some outline other buildings like public parks.
Did we do any, did, did we do any work this last year for any improvements for that, Sonia? I don't remember.
Not, not at City Hall, um, the Community Center had some issues. Um, with theirs and so it was replaced, I, they have several out there, um, but they were upgraded because of the, the issues that they were having.
And that we are able to take this and replenish that for what we.
No, we can't, we can't go back.
We could just go forward with the new upgrades? Okay, that's the only questions I had, um. Anything that we can look into possibly doing with the recreation? Um, the, with the Rad Card, uh, I, you know, I, I see this. As probably one of our biggest, I think we need to push forward for, uh, for sure. So right now, that's all I have, if I have another question, I'll come back after a while, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Um, Ms. Lewis?
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have just a couple of things, uh, I'm definitely, you know, in favor of the Rad Card, I, I. I think that we, I don't know if we can use part of that money for getting out advertisement to let people know. That this is available to be used in the community, because certainly there is a, a gain for a person purchasing the card. As well as the merchant where the card is gonna be used, so it's a win-win situation all the way around, um. Wastewater treatment, uh, I'm not sure if there's anything at our plant area that, uh. We can use this money for enhancement on, and certainly if there is, uh, es- especially as our community grows, I, I think we're gonna. Uh, at some point have to build a plant, uh, rather than using the system, uh, that we're currently used, uh, to. Uh, filter waste treatment, but, um, whatever we can use to enhance our waste treatment. Uh, from this federal money that we received, I, I would like to see that happen. Um, broadband, there was only a hundred thousand dollars allocated for that, um. And there was talk about underserved and. There were two categories that, that I think Councilmember Jones was.
Underserved and we actually didn't allocate anything.
Right, but there was also unders- the two categories you mentioned, but there was a third category, which was bit, uh, uh, businesses downtown. So, or businesses, I think, was the third category in there. Am I correct?
It's underserved or unserved household or businesses, so.
Or business, okay, so, would any of our businesses in the effect, in the, uh. The area on that map, does it, does that apply to the map as well?
No, this map doesn't apply to that category.
So with that in mind, um. Could that, could that assist some of, some of the businesses, because you spoke about, uh, uh, possibly doing, uh. People needing to do business on their computers at City Hall or Community Center, but if we have people at restaurants downtown. Or, uh, in other places where they're, they're going to be accumulating for, for some time. They may need to have that service available to them as well, or as our downtown grows, you know, I'm hoping that we're gonna have incubator businesses. In our downtown and certainly that's going to benefit them, so, um. I, I don't know how that will fit in, but if that's an area that we can investigate and look into, uh, for our businesses, um. You know, that, I think that would be an appropriate spin, um. The, in regards to the pickleball, I hear the cry of the, of the people who. Love to play this sport, and I know in the affected area of the, the, I won't say affected area, but the outline area for low income. The only park that we have in there is Colorado, um, I think Councilmember, uh, Jones. Indicated something about wind over there, but I remember, uh, back in May, I was doing some filming for the air, uh, air quality board. And I was at the Chaco Park and the wind just really whips down Eighth Street. And when we moved over to City Hall to finish off the filming, the winds were calm there, so I don't know that. You know, that particular area would be the greatest area, certainly Colorado Park, uh, has a tennis court there. And maybe there's, could be some mitigation of, of, um, taking care of that wind problem. If the, the city and the council decides that's a good area to put pickleball courts. But, um, there, there is an area already there that, that is designated for tennis type. Uh, play and, you know, I understand pickleball courts are quite a bit smaller, so, you know. It's just an area for consideration, other than that, um. You know, I, I, I certainly would like to see these courts put in an area where we already have some large major parks. Uh, for me, the rail trail, I wanna see us build our business infrastructure up more on the rail trail. Uh, the city doesn't own a lot of property there, but whoever buys, decides to buy that property. Um, may decide that that's what they want to do, is, is bring in more business or some type of industry. A small industry, I'm not talking about big stuff, but, um. I, I, I wanna see something that's, that's gonna continue to enhance our downtown. And, you know, we, we had a project that came to us this past Wednesday at council meeting, which was a very good project. And I would like to see things continue on through the rail trail of that type of, of. To bring in that type of business or something similar that would, um. Just enhance the downtown and, and, and I, I realize that, you know, we have a community center there. It's a beautiful thing, the plaza is beautiful, it's the center attraction of our downtown, but. I, I'm struggling to figure out in small communities where you have your downtown. Who has recreational outdoor activities going on, such as what is being proposed. On Eighth Street or the rail trail, and, and I, I'm not finding anything immediately, and there may be some out there, but I'm just. Not finding anything, uh, that is in your downtown area like that, um. So that, those are my takes on those, uh, items, um. In regards to the news, the newspaper request, um. I, I have some concerns because newspapers are not. Something that's growing in United States anymore, they're on the decline, and, um. That's, you know, I, I, I can't say that's why, um, the, the company that owned the, uh, enterprise took it out, uh. Mr. Lee, uh, gave us some, uh, indication as to why they stopped it, but. They're not doing that great either with the other newspapers that are going on, um, I, you know. I, I don't have enough information to even give a. Um, an honest opinion about this, but just, just off the top of my head, uh, newspapers are a dying breed. Now, whether they're upcoming in smaller communities, um, I'd certainly wanna see evidence of that, circulation, growth. The whole nine yards, so, um, right now, I, I, I can't give an opinion on that, except to say that. In general, newspapers are not a growing, um, enterprise anymore, because it's just. Some of us older people are people who are tactile and like to hold papers in their hand that will, uh, read a newspaper. But for the most part, today's generation is, um, doing everything online and, and getting their news from online sources. Whether it's a newspaper that's online or some other source that's online, so, um, that's kind of my take on it right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis, uh, let me open up my screen here and then we go to Mr. Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, let's see. Bear with me this time, I, my notes are all over the place and I, I can't read them. Um, as far as the, uh, the, uh, Rad Card, we talked extensively about that, so. I guess enough said on that, uh, I think it's a worthwhile project and it looks like you have a very good handle on it. Uh, could you put that, uh, screen back up, please, thank you. Equipment and technology, that's for, uh, the police department?
The equipment and technology, yes.
Is it possible to increase that to a hundred fifty, two hundred, I think that, uh, that's something that, uh, I prefer them to have. Enough money for that, because, uh, then not have enough and have to come back.
Okay.
Investment parks and outdoor fitness, uh, can this money be used to, to create like a plaza or some, uh. Something like that, or is, is it strictly to improve existing, uh, outdoor?
Um, I, it's very basic, the way the language is written, it says invest in parks, public plazas. And other public outdoor recreation centers, uh, or spaces, excuse me. I believe that it can be, but again, it's in that census tract.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, um, I agree, uh. The pickleball craze, uh, seems to be, uh, hot right now, I guess, like they say, the time to invest is, is now. So I, I'd, I'd be interested in, in pursuing that, um, location, I guess, would be important, I think, um. Mrs. Lewis made a very good point, I haven't seen that either, but that doesn't mean it, it can't work. Uh, maybe because our community is smaller, it, it can work here, I don't know, but, uh, I think that, uh. The presenters made very good points as to how that would be beneficial to our community, uh. Now, another thing is a paracord, are you familiar with that? There are various different, uh, exercise positions, they're made out of, well, timber or wood?
Oh, yes, it, it's actually, we're actually doing research on that now, um, through a grant program. And the, the only way we could use ARPA funding for it is if it does go again in that red area, um. That investment parks, outdoor fitness is kind of a placeholder, and when I said we wanna replace or add new. Replace existing or add something new like that is if we got the grant, this might be the amount that we would have to match with. So it is something that we're looking into.
Fantastic, that, that'd be interested in that, and, uh. The, we're talking about HVAC, that's fine, uh, water sewer, sewer, I, can we use this money to try to, uh. Improve some of the, uh, pumping stations, I know with the, the way the city's growing, some of the water pressure, uh, becomes an issue, especially, uh. You know, folks get up at the same time, uh, you know, the water pressure at, at the shower kind of declines quite a bit. Uh, also, we have, uh, various tracks, various buildings, uh, it came in, in, in various. Years using a different sized pipe, different size, uh, different type of, uh, material, uh, steel, concrete, et cetera. Uh, is there something that we can look at and to try to, uh, consolidate and, uh, uh. Utilize one continuous system or, or improve those areas where we have problems every year, especially with flooding. Because we have large pipes going to small pipes, that type of thing, do you, you know.
A little more research on the specifics of that, um, but Nippon's also looking at projects, so we can get back to on that one.
Okay, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, see if we can improve or if there's any areas that we need to improve on our current water treatment facility. Uh, so that, uh, again, we have that money now to take care of that, so that we don't, not worry about it later on. Uh, maybe do a, a good inspection of our current facilities, see where we can, uh, upgrade, replace or improve maintenance.
Okay.
Broadband, uh, you know, I'd, I'd have to go with, uh, the, the responses from the citizens, it, it doesn't seem like a lot of interest in that. But you can use that money somewhere else, although I, I think I, I see Mrs. Lewis's point as to maybe. Although, I, I think I, I see Mrs. Lewis's point as to maybe providing a, a communications center around the downtown area, that way it makes it a lot more user friendly for folks using their uh, uh devices. Uh, and they tend to linger more when they have connectivity, so maybe concentrating it more in that area for uh, for the broadband uh, uh effort. And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Well, I'm in support of everything here. Uh, it looks like most, we're pretty much on the same page. Um, I would like to ask him, it's Bowersocks, we're talking about wastewater. Uh, something that someone had talked to me about, the water folks talked to me about is, is purple pipe. Uh, take wastewater and bring purple pipe into the city to use it to irrigate city property. Um, is it irrigation, is that something that uh I would assume, I, I assume it would be something we could, we could do with this, with the infrastructure development? And is it something that you have considered at your, in your office?
Yes, that's definitely, um, thank you, Mayor Furia. Um, that's definitely something we could look into. Um, at this point, our treatment facility is not set up to be able to provide recycled water. We would have to go to a different source. Um, and we could do a feasibility study um and explore different options for how we can access recycled water. And so I think that would be something, either we, if we can explore, if we can use ARPA funds or we could also look at um other sources of grant funding. Um, there's, there's lots of sources out there that would support that type of project.
Okay, well, if there's other money out there, then let's, let's go after the other money and we'll save our ARPA money. Um, I think that if the town, if we're going to grow with our businesses and our houses and our people and our waste, our wastewater ponds are eventually gonna lose their, uh, gonna lose their capacity to serve the whole town. And will, this purple pipe idea, uh it, it takes the stress off the, off the freshwater supply. And it also takes the uh stress, uh gives more use to the wastewater, is that correct?
Yes, it actually serves multiple purposes. It could be used as groundwater recharge to help us with our groundwater sustainability plan. That's another option that we could look at. Uh, we could use it for irrigation and as you are all aware, we are in a severe drought. Um, unless we have um a few years of good rainfall, we will stay in probably in the same condition, so we need to start looking at um ways to um help strengthen our water supply um in, in the area. And as, um, as we're looking at the, the updated master plan, I'm, I'm sorry, the general plan coming up. You know, in order for us to facilitate growth, we will have to take a look at the overall infrastructure of the city. Um, not just water, it'll be wastewater, stormwater, um to support that type of growth.
Okay, very good, thank you, Ms. Bowersock. Um, and uh, Mr. Yamas, you have your hand up?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I can wait after you're done.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, uh, one item I forgot was the, the, the proposal by Mr. Lee. Uh, yes, a lot of newspapers are, are going by the wayside because of uh, uh the electronics means of uh communication and, and putting out the information. However, he, he seems to have uh, tapped into a, a viable business uh, uh entity that's, that seems to be growing. They're actually, from what I understand, they're actually purchasing additional newspapers and they're making them viable. So I, I would be interested in that because, yes, we do need a centralized source of of uh reporting, of real journalism, of uh, uh posting of some of those uh essential postings that the city has to uh post and notify, uh et cetera. Uh, so I'd be, I would be interested in, in uh having staff uh engage Mr. Lee and see if that really is something that's, it's viable and see what his business plan looks like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I think it's worth, something worth having a look at. Um, I think it's something worth having a look at and, and I agree. It won't hurt to have staff and sit down with Mr. Lee and his, and his business partners and see. Um, I do know one thing that's missed a great deal is the regular sports pages that everybody, that uh, everybody likes to, and, and all those, all those local family things that you, you like to see. And yes, the newspaper, the, the paper, the paper paper, I mean, the, the actual material paper has kinda gone out of use and style, but I, uh, the idea of having a, an adjudicated uh newspaper and of course, of course, the city advertisements, uh the city notices are revenue and ads and whatnot. So I don't think there's any problem, I, I would encourage that, that conversation to see and have staff uh bring back something to us and see what could be done, a business model that, that works. Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I, I'm just gonna kinda echo a little bit off of that, that was some of the stuff I actually wrote back down here to talk about. For small businesses in our town, uh when they open up, uh they have to go through what they call the fictitious business. And they have to run ads in their local newspaper. Uh, so that, that's something that, you know, we can look into, that why the newspapers are always gonna be there for us. Uh, also, I mean, newspapers nowadays, they're pretty much using recycled uh paper. Uh, you know, I've, every weekend I get a newspaper just so I could read. Uh, but, but I just wanted to, if, if there's something that we can look into and hopefully we could discuss later down the road uh for Mr. Lee. Uh, I would be willing to look into it, uh especially for businesses for uh running ads for their business. Uh, you know, it, it's very hard for these small businesses to get any type of uh noticement, run special ads, you know, say, hey, we're open. And I think a newspaper would be a way to get out there. So I just wanted to put in a little bit with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, and of course, the rad program, everything staff has recommended. Once again, uh echoing that I'm totally supportive of, of those programs, those programs that are working. Um, I can, now, we, we don't have Mr. Heim on board, I don't know. Um, will pickleball court, will any pickleball courts fit into the rail trail? Is it twenty feet wide? I don't know if anybody can answer that.
I'm not sure, but because obviously council showing interest in pickleball, staff will go back and look at that red area. See if there's any feasible areas that staff thinks it might fit in. And if it does, we'll bring the options back to council, but uh, uh, I don't even know what a pickleball court looks like. So we'll work with Joe on the size requirements, I'll work with Stacy on the census tract to see where it fits in. And when I bring this back to council, if it's feasible, we'll give you guys a couple of options on, on where staff thinks that it might fit.
Okay, very good. And I, yeah, Mr. Jones, I was just gonna echo your ideas uh on the, on the infrastructure and the pre, the form, the, the future planning so that you set up now pickleballs in style, but you set up maybe some restrooms and services, uh situations for future recreation. Go ahead.
Well, I do wanna make a comment though, um about the, the property lines there. That rail trail can also be adjusted and moved and tweaked and moved around whatever infrastructure we're gonna put there too. So don't look at that as we have to stay within those lines of what the, those DLA properties are. So we can, we can move a lot of stuff around to uh make a better use out of the total space, can't we?
No.
Because Bill said we could.
No.
Bill?
Yeah, those re, we could, if we take that reimbursement agreement, we have to go back to each one of the entities and look at adjusting it, that, those specific, um, whether it's governmental use, that's approved by the Department of Finance. And they, you know, they gave authorization, like we tried to get a lot of that back, the city property, it didn't work, but we had to. The only way they would give it to us is in a reimbursable agreement, so we would have to say, oh, instead of you getting money for it, we want it for free, is essentially what you would be doing.
Okay, so I, I'm confused here because, okay, let's just say we own the property, we bought it outright, paid off whatever we need to. Do we have the ability to adjust the lot lines, to move them around and to move the rail trail?
Within that area that we own, yes, but we don't own that property outright.
Of course, not yet.
No, no, we're not going to own that property outright.
Oh, the rail trail, we don't own that outright?
Let me bring, let me bring the map up again, there's areas that we own outright. Only we own or are exclusive, that we will own or that we own outright. So let's use Henry Miller Plaza as an example because it is the biggest parcel along that trail. It's um, all one parcel, bear with me while I find it, here we go. And it's larger, so you can see it, okay. So let me give you an example of what Mr. Vaughn says he's not here to defend himself, probably meant. The way this is split out here, Henry Miller Plaza and this corner area here is um for government use, so it will be owned outright by the city. Within this red box area, if we want to cut it right here and sell it to the people that are putting the museum there, we can do that. We can definitely do that, we could move the lot line, this, because we also own the rail trail here. We could take this line and move it back, I mean, if we want it to, we could align it exactly with the rail trail because we own that property. However, property C is a future development property. We cannot take this red line that's here and move it over here and say now we want this. We can't do that because this C
Of course, Sonia, I think we're talking about the same thing here.
Okay.
So let's just say C, we purchased it outright, we owned it, no other entities owned it. Is that even possible, not with these funds, just say with general funds?
If we bought this, then yes, we could split it however we want.
Okay, so that part is, is settled, so locate, Sonia, you're jumping the gun here.
You scared me a little, but we can't move lines magically, sorry.
Sonia, can you, can you quit for a minute, Sonia?
Sure.
I'm saying if we own the land outright and we own the rail trail, if you wanna put that map back on, I'll explain. So just like we were able to uh alter lines or cut out, carve out an area on the corner, a settlement, an age for the private party that's buying it, let's just say we own C outright. If you're saying we owned uh parcel A or item A there, we can move the line from item C upright, or we can move that trail down a little bit if we needed a little space on the other side, right? If we owned it, both of it, that's what I was saying, and that's what Bill told me. Is that incorrect? Uh, you're on mute, Sonia.
Muted, Sonia.
Sonia, you're on mute, we couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened. I said, yes, if we owned the line C, then we can change the lot line adjustments.
And that's all I was saying, because we're not gonna build something on something we don't own, right?
Exactly, we, we're not allowed to.
So what I was saying was correct, if we own the property, we own the structure that we put on there, if we own the adjacent parcel, we can move some, some items around. Right?
If we own it, yes.
Something?
No, I was confused because I thought you were implying that we
You jumped the gun, Sonia.
I'm sorry?
You jumped the gun on that one.
Okay, and I just apologized, I, I said I was confused and I apologize.
All right, thank you.
That uh, um, the RDA and the DLA has been a very complex and confusing process. Um, and that uh, that property, that C area property, we, if we wanted to buy that we would have to pay out all the, essentially the heirs, right? Uh, the, all the entities uh that have a, if the city, it's for proposed development. I wanna make sure I'm correct on this, it's listed as proposed development. If the city wanted to develop on it, then we would have to purchase it from uh all the other entities that have an interest in the property at this time, is that correct?
Yes, we would purchase it, but the, the city holds the land, but yes, we would have to purchase it. And then the, the reimbursement agreement would pay all the different entities, that's correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I think it's pretty clear that um, that council wants to, uh, we've been pretty clear about what we wanna see. Uh, that everybody is pretty well on the same page about what we wanna see happen. And that's a good thing. Um, the, the homeless hotel vouchers, that's a little help there. Uh, I have, just on the homeless thing, I have been discussing and am going to be bringing something, uh, an item to M C A G to see if we can get the, the conversations going at M C A G about handling homelessness as a regional issue because uh rather than, uh more as a regional than rather just each entity. Um, and uh, it's, it's a big issue. Uh, the, the polls that I have been uh privy to have said that the public wants it handled. And so I, I'm doing the best I can at that level. Uh, so we've, we've gotta hold back our, we, we're, we've got our, our, our ARPA money. Uh, we're gonna have, we have quite a bit held back here so we can plan for the future. We've got plans here to go uh get things done. So I wonder, I think we're, we're on a good, a good, uh, good track, pretty clear about what we wanna see done. Staff, are we clear, or are you clear on direction from, from council today? Or is there any clarification you would like to hear?
Sorry, that I was on mute again. Um, I think I'm, I have clear direction on what to bring back, obviously there'll be some more decisions to make in addition to the things that we've requested, I don't know that that'll spend the front being in its entirety. So we'll bring back the first round and we'll just say that it's an ongoing process. I think all for your input tonight.
Thank you very much. And um with that, I think we have completed our workshop and staff has direction. So I will move to item seven, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Lambert, make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Lambert, thank you, uh, do I have a second?
Councilmember Lewis, second.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Mayor Plutin Lewis to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, Ms. Malinick?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes, motion carried unanimously, meeting adjourned at six P M. Thank you everyone for joining, good night, happy Thanksgiving.